Good morning. Welcome to our Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting for September the 15th, 2020. I'd like to remind all of us that we are in the phase 2.5 of Governor Cooper's lifted restrictions under Executive Order 163. We will have no more than 25 persons in one meeting place, and the public may watch this meeting on WayneGov.com. I also ask you at this time, if you will, to silence your cell phones, that we may have a smooth meeting without interruption, minimal interruptions. Today, our invocation is by Commissioner Worrell. Commissioner Worrell, you have our invocation.
Yes, sir. Pastor Timothy Whitfield is an associate pastor at Wave of Glory Center in Goldsboro, North Carolina. He is widely known as an educator, innovator, and mentor, serving in these capacities in the surrounding areas. His guidance and instructions have inspired and motivated many people to aspire to and achieve the highest of standards. Timothy Whitfield values the role of local congregation as the center of learning and launching into the message of the Lord Jesus Christ for the world. He has utilized the mythology of praying together, sharing together, and extending together in Christ, which employs the total person in the ministry effort of the Church. He is a native of Goldsboro, North Carolina, a lifelong resident. Timothy Whitfield is proud of his family roots and tradition. He is married to Cynthia Carraway Whitfield, who is also from Goldsboro. He is a proud father of four children, Crystal, Maurice, Ricardo, and Centalia. Timothy Whitfield is faithful, faithful, energetic, humorous gift to the body of Christ. Come on up, Pastor Whitfield.
Good morning. Good morning. Welcome, Pastor.
God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and opportunity to serve the people of this county. As this meeting is conducted today, help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen and understand goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. God continue to give us the spirit of service. Remind us, we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be leaders of your people in need. Help us to see humanity and the dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence humanity deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of mankind. We ask this as your servants with confidence and your goodness and love. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Commissioner Freeman-Hardison has to pledge allegiance today.
Stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, on our agenda today, we have the approval of our board minutes from September the 1st, 2020. If you've read those...
I move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes for September 1st, 2020. Are there any additions or discussions of this agenda? The minutes, rather. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous. Before we move along, I forgot something, but I wanted to let the public know that Commissioner Camardi will be here somewhere around 9:30. So, I don't know if he's had a doctor's appointment, but something's come up, but he will be in attendance here shortly. We also at this time have the discussion and adjustment of the agenda. Mr. Hynnicott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do, would like to add one thing to the agenda under special presentation. Excuse me, we would make that number one. Mr. Bruce Kearney with the Wayne County Firefighters Association would like to read a proclamation proclaiming October as Fire Prevention Month. And I think Mr. Kearney is...
He's better than we.
And that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, maybe something you and I had talked about and we forgot to add this on. What are some additions, something we need to do with broadband, open broadband?
Yes, sir. One of the things that, you know, the board knows we've been working on is the NC Great Grant, which is to provide additional broadband service for the rural areas of Wayne County. We have been working with open broadband. Part of the requirement for this grant, where I think it's about $1.6 million, we're about a million-dollar grant that we're asking for from NC Great, is that one of the requirements is a letter of credit. And one of the things that they have asked the county to provide is that letter of credit on their behalf. And if we are to do that, we feel very confident that, you know, it's not a big issue. It was more of a cash flow issue for them than it was anything else that they've asked that the county provide that letter of credit. And with the board's approval, we would like to provide that to help bolster their application. So if that is agreeable, we can put that under consent agenda as number seven. Motion to approve a letter of credit for open broadband in the amount of $1 million for the NC Great Grant.
Okay.
And this is a grant, this is not money we got to pay.
That's right. This is just an assurance, really, that...
Because we still got several spots around the county that still do not have broadband.
Yes, sir. Especially with, you know, the COVID issues and the issues of kids not having internet access at home, this is a really important thing for us to be doing at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So if agreeable, we would add that as the letter of credit for open broadband as number seven under our consent.
Is everybody in concurrence to add it to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
No?
Yep.
Okay. All right. All right, we're good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay, are there... We have, oh, we have a phone committee, don't we?
We got a vote on it.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
I'm looking to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve our agenda. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hynnicott, do you have anything else?
No, sir. If you want, we can go ahead and start with special presentation. Like to ask Mr. Bruce Kearney with the Wayne County Firefighters Association, who I appreciate his, that's a copy of it, willingness to come today and read this proclamation on behalf of the Firefighters Association.
Like Mr. Hynnicott said, my name is Bruce Kearney with Wayne County Firefighters Association. We've been doing fire prevention in Forte County for about six years now, which I've been doing fire prevention for probably 25 years. I've been a firefighter for 42 years. I'd like to read this proclamation. The Fire Prevention Month proclamation. Whereas Wayne County, the county of Wayne, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Wayne County. And whereas fires are serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at the greatest risk for fire. And whereas home fire kills more than 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, where fire departments respond to more than 173,200 annually between the periods of 2013 to 2017. And whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas more than half reported nonfatality, nonfatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas children under five face a higher risk of nonburns associated with cooking being, or cooking being burned in a cooking fire. Whereas Wayne County residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food and on the stove top. Keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from stove tops. And whereas residents who may have planned and practiced home fire escape plans are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Wayne County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Wayne County residents are responsible to the public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen", effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. So therefore, Ray Mayo, Chairman of Wayne County Commissioners, to hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as Fire Prevention Month throughout this county, and to urge all the people of Wayne County by checking their kitchens for fire hazards and using safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2020, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Wayne County Fire and Emergency Services. Here I have Ms. Kay Howell with me. She was going to read a press release, if that's fine. It won't take just a few seconds.
Yes, thank you.
As Fire Prevention Week approaches, Wayne County Firefighters Association reminds residents, "Serve up fire safety in the kitchen." The Wayne County Firefighters Association is teaming up with the National Fire Protection Association, the NFPA, the official sponsor of Fire Prevention Week for more than 90 years. To promote this year's Fire Prevention Week campaign, "Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen", the campaign works to educate everyone about simple but important actions that they can take to keep themselves and those around them safe. According to the NFPA, cooking is the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries in the United States. Almost half, 44%, of reported home fires started in the kitchen. Two-thirds, 66%, of home cooking fires start with the ignition of food or other cooking materials. "We know cooking fires can be prevented," said Lorraine Harley, NFPA's Vice President of Outreach and Advocacy. "Staying in the kitchen, using a timer, and avoiding distractions such as electronics or TV are steps everyone can take to keep families safe in their homes." The Wayne County Firefighters Association encourages all residents to embrace the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme. "The most important step you should take before making a meal is to serve up fire safety in the kitchen," said Bruce Kearney, Chairman of Fire Prevention. "A cooking fire can grow quickly. I have seen many homes damaged and people injured by fires that could easily have been prevented." Wayne County Firefighters Association wants to share safety tips to keep you from having a cooking fire. Never leave cooking food unattended. Stay in the kitchen while you are frying, grilling, or broiling. If you have to leave, even for a short time, turn off the stove. If you are simmering, baking, roasting, or boiling food, check it regularly. Remain in the home while food is cooking and use a timer to remind you that you're cooking. You have to be alert when cooking. You won't be alert if you are sleepy, have taken medicine or drugs, or consumed alcohol that makes you drowsy. Always keep an oven mitt and pan lid nearby when you're cooking. If a small grease fire starts, slide the lid over the pan to smother the flame. Turn off the burner and leave the pan covered until it is completely cool. Have a kid-free zone of at least three feet around the stove and areas where hot food or drink is prepared or carried. Some more fire prevention facts are to plan and practice home escape plans. Know two ways out of every room. Get out and stay out, and have a good meeting place. Remember to check your smoke alarms at least once a month. That would be a good time to practice your fire escape plan. If you have any questions on escape plans, you can call Bruce at 919-223-1516, and he can assist with your escape plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any, what's the purpose of the board?
I made the motion that we accept this resolution, and I just wanted to personally thank Bruce and Kay. They took on the fire prevention program in Wayne County several years ago, and if they can just save one life, all of the time and effort that they put into it, it will pay off. And again, thank y'all for...
And I don't know if people in the county really know what kind of resources we have. We have a 48-foot trailer. It's got a kitchen set up in it, a little auditorium, but with this COVID, we can't let anybody in because of the clearance issues. It's just more than fire prevention. We have storm awareness. We do a little bit of everything there. Home safety, where to store chemicals. I mean, there's different ways that have happened to people in the county to stay safe in all the different ways. And thank y'all for giving us the opportunity.
And I wanted to add that that trailer is available at no charge. We go to churches, any kind of events. All you have to do is go on Wayne County Firefighters Association website. There is a request form there. Fill it out. It comes to me. I'll contact you, set up a date. And like I say, it's not a costly. We go to any event and do the fire safety. We enjoy doing it, and I have missed not going out with the trailer this year because we're usually booked up every weekend.
That was a firefighter's first tool in fighting fires, fire prevention.
Thank you. We have any, you may have some more discussion there. Is there any other discussion we haven't mentioned before? But is there any discussion or comments? Thank you so much for coming and sharing with us, and very, very important. I guess, and I guess I must have forgotten, but I didn't realize how the number of fires that cooking causes, you know? We used to cook, when I was growing up, with wood. We didn't have a lot of, we didn't have a lot of heat because grease to catch on fire a lot of times. But nowadays, I can see where it can be a big issue. Thank y'all for coming. Thank you for what you do. We have a motion on the floor to set the, to approve the Fire Prevention Month of October as Fire Prevention Month in Wayne County. Any more discussion or comments? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous. Thank y'all for coming. Okay, Mr. Hynnicott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next on our agenda is a presentation on the discussion of COVID-19 by the Wayne County Medical Director, Dr. James Stackhouse, Wayne County Health Director, Dr. Brenda Weiss, and Dr. Alma Jenkins. And we appreciate, we've got, there's some slides that they want to show as well. I do want to thank Dr. Jenkins for her offer. She contacted us and felt very led to do this, and we appreciate your willingness to do this for us today.
Is she presenting first? Thank you to all of the commissioners and everyone here for giving me the opportunity to come before you. And let me take a minute to also thank you for the work that you do for our county. I am timing this so that I don't go over 10 minutes. And I also want to thank Dr. Stackhouse and Dr. Weiss because they are the real fighters here in this pandemic. First of all, I want to just stress several things that I want to take away from this little talk, and that is to share general information about coronavirus, to emphasize how we can stay safe, and to emphasize how much a difference, how much of a difference and an impact doing a simple thing can make. So let's see if I can go to the second slide. Oh, great. So first of all, we'll talk about what is a pandemic. We all know what a pandemic is. It's an epidemic that's spread over a large region of the world, so it's a play on words kind of. So the pandemic means it's everywhere. The closest pandemic to us that had occurred in our lifetimes, most of our lifetimes, would be 2009 with the swine flu, and that was the most recent pandemic. But that wasn't nearly as bad as what we're dealing with right now. But it's thought to have killed between 150 and 500,000 people. The Spanish flu is the real one that everybody talks about that was probably as impactful, well, more impactful than this one. It infected about 500 million people. That was about a fourth of the Earth's population at that time. There were about 2 billion people in the world then, and there are about 8 billion, almost 8 billion, in the world right now. But that particular virus infected about 500 million people and thought to have killed maybe 50 million people, so it was quite something. So what is coronavirus? Coronavirus, and this is just a computer-generated model of this virus, notice that it has the spikes on it, and there's a reason for that. Although, we don't know as much about this as we would like to know because it is called a novel coronavirus. We've seen coronavirus before, but this is a new, I guess you would say, strain kind of of the virus. They are a group of viruses that cause several diseases in mammals and birds. Those spikes really help the virus. A simple way to look at it is, it sort of helps the virus grab onto the cell that it wants to go into and get into that cell. And once it's in there, it hijacks your own DNA to make it. So you basically become a virus factory. And as it goes to each cell and does that, eventually, it could kill the host. So this is one of the reasons for the, really, the toxicity, you might say, of this virus. And it's called Corona because of the way that it looks there with the crown-looking thing. How does this virus invade the host? Well, I'm not going to get into a lot of that, but there are, you know, all kinds of, there are, you know, receptors and all these kinds of things that help the virus to get in and start to infect the host. But the important thing I wanted to talk about there is who's at risk for this invading? Well, we're all at risk to get the virus if we're unprotected, meaning we're not doing those things that we've been asked to do. But who is likely to get sicker? Who does it affect worse? Well, those with chronic disease, heart disease, diabetes, hypertension. And a lot of these are your, you know, if you have essential workers, which we do have, and a lot of the members of these essential workers are people who are very much at risk, African-Americans, Latinos, who are in many of these jobs. But anyone can get this virus. But it seems to have picked off in terms of getting the sickest, those who are most vulnerable. Now, 80% of people who get this virus will recover, will have mild disease. 20% will get sick, and a smaller percentage of that will have a life-threatening presentation, have to go on the ventilator, and possibly die. How is the virus spread? It spreads from person to person via respiratory droplets. Now, there's a lot being said about these droplets. The larger ones can fall to the ground easier, the smaller ones can float around in the air, and they can even become what we call aerosolized. So what are the symptoms? We all know the symptoms. Fever, fatigue, respiratory symptoms such as dry cough, shortness of breath. Can go into pneumonia. The symptoms typically appear two to 14 days later, averaging five to six days after exposure. But the evidence shows that the virus can be spread even by people who show no symptoms, asymptomatic people. And what we've seen is that a large fraction of those people are young, the younger group. And that's just at the age when you feel like you're not vulnerable, that you're, you know, you can conquer anything. But it's this group oftentimes that, you know, feels great, but they have the virus and they're asymptomatic. But they can still spread the virus to Grandma and Grandpa and Aunt Henry, Aunt Ju, Aunt Ju, Auntka Henry, that sort of thing. So how can I protect myself? Sanitize, washing hands thoroughly, often with soap and water or alcohol-based hand sanitizer. Now, it should be at least 60% alcohol. And there was some news out about there being some contaminated sanitizers with methanol. You don't want that. You want it to have alcohol, 60% at least. Social distancing, staying more than six feet away from other people. And we know most of this stuff. I think my takeaway point is going to be on the very end. So we know that the virus can actually travel further than six feet. But on an average, if you're maintaining that six-foot distance, that's thought to be a pretty standard, good distance because you're talking about the traveling of these droplets that you breathe in. And then wear a mask that covers your nose and your mouth. Oftentimes, we see people wearing it just around their mouth and the nose is out, but you're exhaling through your nose as well. So the virus doesn't care how it gets there. And it is, to be such a small thing that you can't see, it's really very effective in catching on to you. You breathe it in, and then you, you're, you know, contaminated, so to speak. Now, there are different kinds of masks available. The CDC does not recommend the masks with exhalation valves in them. You've seen a lot of people wearing those. They don't really recommend those for this because, you know, you're exhaling things. Face shields are not substitutions for masks. I see a lot of people wearing these face shields with the plastic down. That's more like a splatter guard, you might say. And if you look at what people are wearing in the hospital, and we're around much more than you are just on the street, but they may have that on, but they've got a mask on too. So for the general public, wearing a mask is really the important thing. The data suggests that if everyone wears a mask, 58% of COVID-19 deaths could be prevented by the fall of this year. In other words, if 95% of people now, right now, started wearing masks anytime they're in public, 45,000 projected COVID-19-related deaths could be prevented. Or by the end of the year, 70,000 deaths could be prevented. Now, this is based on the model that they've done by researchers at the University of Washington's Institution for Health Metrics and Evaluation. So I wanted to just give you an idea that, just to emphasize the fact that masks do make a difference, contrary to what many people may think. It does make a difference. And one other last example I'm going to give you that I was quite impressed with, the country of Taiwan. Taiwan has many less people than we do, but they've got 25 million people. Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought I silenced it. Taiwan has 25 million people, but they've only had about 500 cases of coronavirus. And guess how many deaths they've had? Seven. Seven deaths. Now, what did they do? They didn't lock down, but what they did is they tested people, they did contact tracing and quarantining, and they did it religiously. They did it religiously. So therefore, they were able to cut the number of deaths. They were able to cut the number of cases. And that's an example for us. And I think, you know, we now have, what, 300 million people in this country? So we have many more. But if you look at it relatively for a country like that, who has only done those three things, you know, wearing masks, social distancing, and washing hands, and then testing, contact tracing, and quarantining, that's quite impressive. So we can make a difference, and it doesn't take a lot of high technology to do so. Of course, over there, they also penalize you if you didn't quarantine, so. And I want to pay a special thank you to our health department because that's exactly what they're doing. So taking care of your mental health during this pandemic is also important. How do you do that? A lot of people are feeling really rather lost in this pandemic because they can't get out, get around their friends. Get enough sleep. Get regular exercise. Stick to a routine. Eat healthily. Stay connected, meaning keep up with your friends and that, and help others. This will all help your mental health during this period. Believe it or not, a lot of people are having some real mental issues behind all of this quarantining. So I want to thank you for giving me the time to do this. I wanted to just encourage you all to do those simple things, particularly with the mask-wearing, and let us all stay safe. And again, I want to thank you for allowing me this time.
Thank you. Stackhouse?
Can we move this slide?
Can we move this slide? Do I do it here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Oh, am I in a different?
You're in a different one.
I'm over there in the right. I can see it. Perfect. And then when I advance, I just do enter?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So I want to thank Alma Jenkins. That was a beautiful science presentation. We always try to, in the health department, think about the science behind what we do and help inform our decisions. So I'm going to shift gears a tiny bit, and Jim and I, we're going to run tag team on this, going to talk about kind of what's going on here in Wayne County. So that graphic on the left is from our lovely dashboard that our Public Information Officer hosts for us. And I find that dashboard and all the other graphics out there incredibly helpful. So I encourage everyone to use the dashboard if you're interested to know what's going on with data. And so this graph shows in the orange the number of new cases, and then the little squiggly line is what we call the positivity rate, which is the number of new positive cases over the number of people tested. So why do we care about that? Because when we want to understand how disease spreads and what kind of the severity of our situation here might be from a public health standpoint, we look at a couple of indicators. And one is this positivity rate. So our positivity rate is hovering at about 3.5. You can see the little squiggly line down there is ending at about 3.25, 3.25 down there, around 4, just under 4. And so comparatively, the state is running about 4% to 6%. So I feel like our number now, you can see it's really been trending in a very flat direction, if not going down. That's all very good for us because if it had been going up, then we'd start worrying about of those we test, we have a whole bunch of positives. We're always going to have positive cases every day. We're running about 13 or 14 new cases every day. But what we care about is of the number that we test, keeping that percentage very low. So we feel like we're doing a pretty good job there. Second indicator that we look at is our death rate. Now, any death is traumatic. Any death is a heartache for our county and for our families. Unfortunately, we have had some deaths. In fact, we've had 62 deaths as of yesterday over about 3,100 positives. So it's a death rate of about 2%. Again, the state level's a little bit higher than this, so even though we've had some deaths, our death rate is hovering at a lower level compared to neighboring counties and to the state as a whole. And then the last indicator that we look at in public health is what we call healthcare capacity. And we sit on some advisory groups with UNC Wayne and other provider groups to get a sense of how they're doing in terms of handling the cases that might come from emergency care or for routine care. So Dr. Stackhouse has a very good relationship with the hospital, and he was reported that the numbers there are fairly stable. So the number of new cases we're seeing is stable, which is good. That means they can handle it. They can handle what's called the surge. And again, also, there's enough available hospital beds right now in our region to handle any new cases that come through. So I want to just say that, like, those three indicators that we have here, I think the work that we've been doing to date, and I'll talk about some of the testing we've been doing in the next slide, is kind of working. I think people are getting the message that doing the right thing keeps our indicators moving in the right direction for us. Of course, we want it to all go away, but unfortunately, that's going to probably be a while, at least until we get a vaccine and probably long after that. So probably for the next eight months to a year, we're going to be looking at these numbers and keeping track of those indicators to make sure we're trending in a positive direction and are actually getting better. So, great. Ooh, this slide is small. And I can provide this afterwards if y'all want to see it in a different view because this is kind of tiny. So we, in July, hosted four community-based testing site venues. It was the health department with several of our county offices. Facility Services was incredible, emergency management, emergency services. And folks like Dr. Jenkins and other community members participated in these community-based testing sites. And why do we do them? Because, first of all, the public wanted us to. And so we were trying to be responsible to the need in the public. But also, it's a really good way to understand at a local level what the spread looks like, number one, especially in pockets in communities that we specifically selected for testing. And we selected these four areas for testing because we felt that folks there might not have had access to testing in their local community, and that we may get a better understanding of maybe some hotspots in our community where we could do more outreach and education efforts based on the findings of our testing. So we really went after sites where we felt that we could reach some populations that were having a hard time getting access to testing. So if you look at the data, what I want to focus on really is the, on each one of the graphics. So this is GWTA. We went to Spring Creek Middle, Grantham Middle School, and CBA-COCH High School. And we did eight events over four weeks in July. So this is from July. And you can see that one of the indicators that's really important is this percent positive of total tested at the site. If you look at that column on each one of those graphs, what we were trying to do is reach out to and engage members of the community that sort of oversampled our population for minority groups that we felt might be at higher risk. So we feel like, let's say, on GWTA, we reached the Hispanic community at 27.3% of tested, whereas our county population as a whole is only 12%. So we feel like, good, okay, we feel like we've got some representation there on our sampling. The other column, and you can look at all the other graphs the same way, our African-American population here is about 31% overall, and really only in Grantham were we able to exceed that. But we got pretty close to that percentage on some of the other sites. And then, as I said, our Latinx population is about 12%. And you can see at each one of the testing sites, in particular, Grantham, and actually in all of them, we greatly exceeded the percentage of representation at our sites. So that's one indicator we were looking at. So we tried to reach folks, and I think we did a pretty good job reaching those we needed to reach. Is there more work to do? Of course there is. But this was our first shot in July to get a sense of what the spread was looking like. The second thing I'm going to point you to is the percent positive total tested by race, ethnicity. It's the far column on each one of them. And again, so what we're looking at is within a racial or minority group, what is the percent positive that we tested that day? And what jumped out at us is the percent of Latinx or Hispanic origin population that tested positive each day. In particular, at CBA-COCH, we had 23% of those tested, tested positive. That's only almost 1 in 4. That's pretty high, right? And so then we started to look at what the state data we're looking at. And then you see in the little blue box in the corner, on average, the state is seeing about a 30% to 35% positivity rate among Latinx communities statewide. So we are seeing kind of similar trend here in the county, a little bit less, but still a trend that higher than, remember, our overall positivity rate is only 4%. But that in these communities, we're seeing much higher than 4%. So what it does is helps us figure out a way to where to shine the light and where to do extra work. And we have been working with our community partners and venues to try to do more outreach and education, try to get folks more tested in that particular group. So Jim, is there anything that I missed there?
We will be approaching that group on Friday.
We will. On Friday, we have a testing event at a church to hopefully reach that Latinx group, and we're doing it in conjunction with some food distribution that goes on there normally. So we feel like that's a good partnership with them, and we will report back to you on what the data that we get at the end of that day. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yep.
Unless there are questions. I'm fine unless there are questions specific to me. But that will conclude our presentation.
Okay. Does, have any questions from any board members?
I have one question. Do you feel like that we are adequate on our testing now?
So that's a super-good question, and I feel like there are a lot of labs and vendors that are working in our community to test, and I think that's a good thing, as well as Goshen and some of the hospitals they're testing as well. I feel like we have pretty good representation of testing. I do feel the Latinx community could be engaged more, but then that is a willingness on their part to be, want to be tested as well. So we try to provide the venues for that, but if they don't want to take advantage of it, there's something that's very hard to solve. So community-based testing for us is a very heavy lift in terms of staff time. And as our Board of Health will know, there's a lot of staff time that goes into putting on those events. And so it's very difficult for us to sustain that over time because of that, even though it might be a good way to reach them. But I feel like there's a lot of other labs and vendors working in our area that are kind of filling the need there. So I do feel that overall. Do you? Yeah.
One other before you sit down is, are you, do you have any idea of what percentage of positives that we could classify as children?
Yeah. So that's a good question because it comes up a lot. We find that the rate of positivity in the 17 and under is quite low, and that's a national trend. And our highest age group is in the early 20s. And so all those kids go back to college, right? So that was that group. We get about 18 to 24 was definitely one of our higher groups, and then 30 to 45 was also quite high. So those are our two highest groups. It's not the children so much, it's kind of the young adults.
Finally, and I don't want to take the podium here, but I have some questions. The, what you're finding is that the schools, was that private schools that are meeting in class, is there a way of finding out if, in fact, those kids may be testing more positive than, say, virtual schools?
So that's a super-good question, too. So we do a lot of communication and outreach with the schools, and we do share information about rates of positivity within the school. And my, honestly, my assessment is I feel that most of the school-based positives that we see are happening in the community, not in the school, if that makes sense. So they're in the community, they're not staying home where they should be staying home, maybe they're hanging out with their friends, not putting a mask on, and they're getting exposed in the community and getting positive, and then they're walking into the school with the positives. I think the school's doing a very good job to mitigate any spread there, but I think most of the spread is happening in the community, not in the school at this point.
Okay. Mr. Page?
You said something that made me think, I have a question about Goshen, and I know there's some other places that they're doing testing as well.
Yes, sir.
I can see our numbers that we did, you know, the slides that you had, or the numbers from those testing sites, or they rolled into your main graph that you started off with. So we have the entire, all the population in there.
That's a great question. And I think that's a question that, you know, you can talk to our Public Information Officer. We get a lot, a lot, a lot, that very question. So I'm glad you asked that. The data that we get in the health department come from the state surveillance system. It's called NCEDSS, Eds. And every provider who does a test is required by law to submit the data to the state surveillance system, which the health department can then access. So all the data on that graph reflect the entire community. The reason why that little rate, 8.111 up there is high is because we have that inmate population there on the spike right there. Thank you. And so that kind of skewed it in the other direction. But all the state, all the county testing, every bit of it, is in this graph.
Well, prior to maybe June 1st, you know, prior to June 1st, there was very limited reporting of negative tests. So the reason that is skewed, the numbers really began making sense in 1st of July when the data was there that included positive and negative tests. And that's why you see the 8.111 in the total graph since March.
Yeah.
Can you hear the question from Mr. Camardi?
Yes, sir.
What area would you consider a hotspot in Wayne County?
So I'm going to lean on Jim for this. I'm going to say Dudley, Mall.
I would, instead of saying area, I would look at living arrangements. I think people who are in closer confined quarters and people who have to work in factories and people who are providing health care or support of others, that's the hotspot right now. We certainly saw a, when we test, when other counties tested areas with 30 or 40 residents in a congregate community of Hispanic workers and field workers, the results were 40% positive, even among those who would come to be tested. There's a population of people who can't stay away from the office, can't come by Zoom to their job. They have to be present, they have to be in a confined area. And they're essential workers. They're people who are providing us with food and medical support and other issues. And that's getting that focus while at the same time having the problem of they don't trust American medicine, they don't want to be told they can't work. And half of them or more, especially if their children, have no symptoms. Those are the things we fight against to try to control this process.
Yeah. Very true.
So once again, the hotspot in Wayne County is where?
We don't have data related, we don't test in a community. The best we can do is those four. Even by zip code, we only have two zip codes. So, you know, most of the hotspot stuff looks two ways. We either look at zip codes, which doesn't help us a bit, or you look at clusters when there are more than four or five cases at a site, at an employer, you know, at a nursing home. That's the best we can put data together at the moment.
I think too, when population density is highest and people are living in more than one person in a home, you'll expect to see higher numbers there, if that answers your question a little bit.
Is that, is that what would be attributed to a higher percent of population in Hispanic community and other minority communities overall is the multi-generational groups living in one home?
I believe so, sir. And I think that they can isolate.
Well, then, if you all are testing and keeping track of who tests positive, then when you use the word, you can narrow it down to a zip code. Well, Wayne County is 28348, I believe, so that spread it out. I think Dudley might be 28333. And, because I live in Mall Olive, therefore, I'm around a larger, in proximity, as far as grocery stores and so forth and so on, a large Hispanic and Afro-American and Haitian population. And all those groups work it, a variety of meatpacking and so forth and so on, but about Smithfield and so forth and so on. And so the question comes up, it would, will it follow that if you're dealing with those populations and noticing that the rate of positive cases are higher in those populations, then what, what advice, what thoughts would you have as far as the school-age population and how they are attending school, or how they are expected to attend school, or how someone is suggesting they attend school? Do you have any thoughts about that?
First of all, in terms of zip codes, Dudley ranked in the top five in the state in the month of July.
As positive cases?
Yes.
5% positive cases of population. Yes, sir. So the answer, your observation is correct, as we've observed with our data. And we're going to a Dudley community and testing this coming Dudley address. The issue with children is that children are just, are carriers of this disease, they take it to adults. The risk to children in this state, in this country, has been very, very low. Pediatric Society has said there's no reason to not have school because of concern about the children's health. It's the teachers and the people they go home to, and it's the children and the grandparents they go home to. The death rate from this disease in children in this country is less than eight per 100,000 children under the age of 18.
But, but...
And half of them have no symptoms.
Something that I have either heard read or, that while the children will not catch the disease, they are the high, they may be one of the highest proponents of caring the germ. Is that inaccurate?
The key word there is "may." We have clusters of daycare centers where one child is responsible for 50 recorded contacts somehow. We have other evidence in Rhode Island that's put in certain constrictions on daycare centers, for example, so that they're in pods, there's isolation, there's not movement between pods, that over 600 daycare centers, there were only five that had significant outbreaks.
Yeah. So children can carry the virus as much as an adult, but some of the latest science coming out is that they may not transmit it, and that's the word you're looking for, to another person as readily as an adult would. And we don't really know why that is scientifically. They don't have symptoms most of the time, or they're very mild, whereas adults would have symptoms. have symptoms, right, and maybe more severe, and they may not transmit as quickly and readily as an adult would. That's what the latest science is saying. Doesn't mean they can't, and that's where the "may" comes in. But they're, you know, we kind of turned them, turned them super-spreaders out of the gate, right? We said, oh, they're super-spreaders, they're just like germ factories. And really, the science has been emerging, and this virus is novel for that reason. Almo is perfectly spot on with, it's very novel, and we're learning every day as we go, more and more about it. But what we are seeing is that the transmission from children to other children and to adults is less than the transmission from an adult to someone else. And that's what's emerging right now. And will that change? It might.
Are you, you okay?
Commissioner World has been waiting for a few minutes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, just, just my question would be, if you remove the inmate population from the testing, testing rate, where would that number be?
Um, it'll still be up around the three or the four, because this is like a cumulative add, so even though the eight point one-one might be skewed because of it, the overall rate of less than four is true.
Okay.
That's our rate today. And you can see, because the line is so flat that last couple of weeks, I think that ended on September fifth, that's that last bar up there, September fifth, the prior, you know, those are all weeks, each bar is a week. Look how many weeks we had where it was hovering around four or five, like two months worth. So that's our true rate right now.
Okay, so are we now controlling the inmate population?
That, I cannot answer that.
There's for sure a front there.
Yeah. Outside my purview.
I will tell you that the safest place in the United States and its territories at this point is a prison in Puerto Rico.
So let's all ignore that.
Which has been able to use extreme measures to isolate delay introduction into a, you know, into a central population, and has basically had no COVID outbreaks in their central population in more than three, six, three to six months now. But, you know, you're not, you can't do that. The risk, we certainly, the prison authority, not a lot of people, they've moved a lot of people, they've put a lot of, you know, passed out, hand washing, other stuff. We don't have any data from the prison system. If it was a, we're not seeing it, and not seeing prisoners at the hospital, I know that from personal experience and stories that were told, not like the effect we had with that major outbreak.
Yeah.
So there are effective means being used, and it's from what we can observe.
Are we good?
I got one other question, given there's more than anybody, but-
Hi.
Yes, sir.
I believe Jamie told us there was averaging about eighteen people in the hospital in last week or so, is that correct?
Yes.
It's been as low as fifteen, up to twenty-five to twenty-eight.
It has kind of settled.
Yeah, kind of hovers.
Our running seven-day average at the hospital is essentially twenty.
I know we're moving, we had more beds than we probably really needed, so I think we could combine them together.
Yeah, that's, that's been, there are beds over there who, that can't be used, that are held in reserve for COVID patients in isolation, which is, for months, has adversely affected the hospital's ability.
Staff has done a good job over there to make sure of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
You have any other, Mr. Lake?
Yes, sir, I, I just wanted to thank y'all for being here today to give us the figures and information for Iowa County, Iowa locality, and I would certainly encourage our citizens to go to the county website and listen to what y'all have presented to us today, so they could get a better handle on what's going on, because, you know, as we all know, we've got the information coming from everywhere, and, you know, the general public really don't know who to believe, and I just feel like if they listen to y'all's presentation, they have a better handle on what's going on here locally. And I just encourage them to go to our website and listen to what y'all have presented us today, and again, thank you for being here.
You're welcome, sir.
Commissioner Martin has, um, comment, excuse me. Commissioner Carter?
If I could get that slide back on up here, I've got two questions.
Okay.
And the first question is out of the-
The slide with the orange bars? That one?
Um, yes.
All right.
Out of the thirty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-eight that were tested-
Yes, sir.
Uh, we had three thousand that were positive, correct? Does the three, does that three thousand include all of the positives in Wayne County? Because they had to get tested in order to have positives. These are all of the positive cases in Wayne County?
Yeah, it's actually thirty-one oh nine as of yesterday. So it goes up about fourteen a day, fourteen new cases a day. So right now, that, that second box is thirty-one oh nine. That first box, the number tested is where the number isn't as accurate and reliable as we'd like it to be, and that's what Jim was trying to point out. We weren't reporting negative results into the surveillance system as quickly and as often out of the gate, and that's like, that was a state, national thing, and over time it's gotten a lot more accurate. So it's probably better to look at the positivity rate on the weekly basis versus the overall.
All right, out of the thirty-one hundred and nine-
Yes, sir.
How many of those were, had no symptoms?
Um, so we don't have that number, but it's a good question, and, but if we look at what's been published on those rates, I'd say between forty and forty-seven-ish percent of folks have no symptoms, or very mild that they don't attribute it to COVID.
And, and the reason I ask that is we were blown away with the numbers at the prison.
Yes, sir.
When those numbers came out, and which it was indicated ninety-five percent of those prisoners were asymptomatic.
Correct.
They didn't even know they had, they, they had no symptoms. So that raises the question that a lot of people are asking, and that is, out of all of these cases that tested positive, how many basically had no symptoms?
We don't have local, but I would say based on the literature, between forty and forty-seven percent of all those positives have no symptoms or very mild. That's what the national data, that's what, we don't have local data on that because we don't collect it.
And then the second question that I'm being asked, and that is, it appears as if there may have been some questions in regards to the reported deaths. And specifically, whether or not the deaths that are reported were absolutely caused by COVID-19, or in fact, are some of these deaths individuals that happen to have a test that had COVID-19? Now, let me clarify it a little bit.
Yep.
If I had COVID-19 and died from an automobile accident, would I be classified as a COVID-19 death?
So that is such an extraordinary question, because it has changed over time. So let me tell you what I mean by that. Initially, the state and national reporting said a COVID-related death had to be tested for COVID, even postmortem, tested for COVID, and confirmed positive, okay? That guideline has changed over time to be anything coded on the death certificate as COVID-related, they might have been in a car accident, and they might not even have been tested. But if it says COVID was a risk factor, now it's considered a probable COVID death. So if that's not murky enough for you, I don't know what is, right?
That's about as murky as you're going to get.
That's about as murky as we're going to get.
So in other words, I was on the way to the hospital.
Yes, that's why it's an extraordinary question.
Well, there's a lot of questions in regards to what we are counting as a COVID, it didn't say a COVID death, it said COVID-related death.
So it's a cause of death on the death certificate. That's the general nomenclature right now. If it's coded as a risk factor or a cause of death on the death certificate, it's counted as a probable case in the state right now.
Can I?
But previously, you had to have a real test, a COVID test.
Let me follow up, the, the, the first thing is, is that your question about how many of those tests that people had COVID, the flip side of that is, is that we know that as many as four to five times that number of people in the population have had the disease and were never tested or never had symptoms.
Correct.
So it's, it's likely that in our county, we've had fifteen thousand cases of COVID based on immune studies that have been done in other, other counties, other areas.
Excellent point.
And that's the other side of that point.
The other side is, is that you're thinking of COVID endpoints as death or I'm fine, and we're finding that's not the case. Studies at University of Michigan involving their football teams, for example, have shown that those who have had COVID have, eighty-five percent of them have detectable myocardial heart changes after the disease. But this is a multi-system disease. So whether you decide it's a COVID-related death, or COVID just helped you die earlier than you would have before-
Push over the edge.
We still have unknowns about recovery, and that's why it's important still to keep your foot on the gas pedal here.
Yeah, and I think Dr. Jenkins was spot on when that message that she gave to us, because that's, that's where we are, and there's a lot of unknowns.
But without pointing a finger, but without pointing a finger or blame on anyone, it's also believed out in the public sector that some of these deaths, deaths are being attributed to COVID-19 only for the reason that there's COVID-19 funding available for reimbursement. So I'm wondering if that, you know, if you don't put it on the death stick, you don't get anything.
I don't have any on that.
I would not go looking for widespread fraud.
Well, I, I'm not- Look, I'm not pointing any fingers, I'm just saying it's, it's an open door.
No, it's, there's, there's opportunities on all sides, there's opportunities for fraud on the testing that's being done.
Yeah.
There are people who have been doing improper tests.
Yeah.
We try to weed that information out and provide the best data we can.
Yeah.
Who, who had something else?
It could be, we just don't have evidence of it.
Mr. Martin?
Uh, I was just, by buying, it's eased back to an earlier part of this conversation about whether you got, died in a car accident, or whether you had, or you died from COVID. The point, I think, a thought may need to be left that prior to that person getting in that car accident, they had a chance to spread that-
Yes.
-to the population, to their families and so forth and so on, and without adequate tracing, or the know that tracing need to be done, you would say, oh, well, that person just got killed in that car accident, let's go on down the road. Uh, another thing that, uh, I want folk to focus on is that, the, and I'm probably not using the right word, but the designated work population who have happened to come in contact with servicing, service, the service industry.
Like the health department.
Ma'am?
Like the health department.
Oh, absolutely, prime time, top of the list. But all the restaurant workers and-
Yeah.
Picking up garbage and everything else, it's, it's, that's a high tension. And then it goes back to some of that population being in a multi-generational household.
Yes, sir.
And this is purely an editorial thought, not based on fact. But it seemed to me that as this unfolded, uh, a great part of the population wanted to hurry back and open up everything, and let's get back to normal. The data came out that, uh, that designated work population and our ethnic groups were suffering the highest number of deaths. And in my editorial opinion, the nation sort of turned and said, let's get back to normal, when a lot of folk who wanted to have those things opened back up were not in the population that was hit, being hit the hardest. That's just purely an editorial, my part. The second thing, well, the second thing is, but, well, the second thing is, I, I would hope that the health department could make the public aware of quote-unquote spikes in hotspots. I mean, and, and I'm not saying that you're gonna absolutely want to avoid certain places, but the more information that the population has, the more likely that you'll be able to, uh, prevent the danger. And I know there are all sort of, and I understand, ma'am, that there are HIPAA rules and regulations about divulging information, but, uh, the public deserves to know a certain amount for their own protection, their family's protection, and so forth and so on.
Every positive that we have on that graph, every single one of them, the health department is required to contact that person and do a four-page questionnaire on who you've been with, where you've been, where do you work, required by law. And it takes us a very long time to do all of those, and that's part of our investigation contact tracing. And every person that we find they've been in contact with also gets a call saying, you've been in contact with a positive, you should stay home, you should get tested if you have symptoms, again, another very lengthy process for every single positive case. So yes, I hear exactly what you're saying.
Thank you for that, that, that does, um-
Yes, and that's required by the state and federal statute, we can't like, say we're not going to do a thing.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, a matter of affirmation, on the thirty-one hundred positive cases or so that we have, the newest correctional, if my understanding is correct, that their cases, positive cases are only counted in Wayne County if they have a Wayne County address, is that correct?
So we do a data reporting every day on a variety of ways we slice and dice the data. One is on just Wayne County residents, and that includes like Butterball and Mount Olive Pickle and across the board, any congregate setting, I think is what you're getting at. So we look at the, the specific Wayne County ones, and then the facility ones. So we look at both. And there are quite a few people working in those settings or being in the prison that are not Wayne County residents.
But they are counted in Wayne County?
Well, we track them by where they're actually from, in addition to being from what, we have two buckets, we have everyone attributed to Wayne County, which is everyone, and then for each person, we, we do know where they're actually from, where their home residence is.
Okay. So-
I think that the inmates are counted as Wayne County residents because they're physically
That one they do, yep.
Yeah, they're physically living in Wayne County.
That's what threw us in a whirlwind to start with-
Yeah.
-here in Wayne County.
Right.
And, and, and I'm still saying, I still, I still am opposed to that for this reason. That's a state-run organization. We, we as county commissioners or the health department, we have very little control over that.
Right, well, see, that big old spike up there, that's it.
Yep, well, that makes the county look bad for no reason, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Because we do not have any control over how that facility is run. You do, as far as the, the health department, but basically-
Not really.
Well, that's my point.
Yeah.
My point is, is that we are, we are being chastised for what we are not responsible for, and I'll, I'll end up with that.
All right.
What I, what I did want to ask is, Dr. Jenkins, did you have any other comments or things that you wanted to make here today?
No, I didn't, I just wanted, I thank everyone, and thank you, Dr. White and Dr. Serre.
Okay.
Thank you, Almo.
And, and this has been one of the most informative sessions that I've been in. I don't know about you, other commissioner.
I would say, if, if Sam come back, just let him know.
Sure, well.
Yeah.
One, one last thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, this is a question, when do you all think that we will have a vaccine?
All right, so you want the, you want the one that goes in the newspaper answer or the real answer?
No, 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 I, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll ask your pardon for, I'll beg your pardon for asking that question, because I know it's, in this season, it's something of a political football back and forth, but I, I, this, this deserves an ounce, I mean, this-
I got it, I got an answer.
For the public.
All right, so the way it's being viewed by experts is that the nation will have a vaccine presumably by the end of the year, November, December, the nation will have a vaccine.
By November.
Well, the clinical trials that need to be done to ensure that it's safe enough, because you've got to remember, there's a lot of public fear around the safety of whatever we produce, because it's being rushed, but in a controlled and nice way, right? But it's still being rushed, right? So a little bit of fear around that, so they want to make sure the clinical, phase-three clinical trials are done, which is November. So the soonest we could have it is in the nation, is probably November, around the election, December, that, right? When will Wayne County get it? Well, we have to work with our state to identify our highest priority residents, which would probably be first responders and healthcare workers and frontline people, and we would expect and hope to get it by January or February. That would be a good timetable for us.
Probably, if you look at distribution estimates- Probably, if you look at distribution estimates, you know, the first release will probably be about 500,000 vials across the entire country. We'd probably be lucky if we saw 5,000 by February.
Yeah, February would be good.
The challenge for the health department is if this stuff will be, it's paid for by the government, it has to be administered.
At the local level.
The things we've learned from previous, for example, the H1N1, was we had the vaccine, we didn't have the syringes, we didn't have the right needles. So this is a mass production issue. And at the national level, they're actually talking about distributing the vaccine in piles of 100 with everything you need from personal protection equipment to the syringes all in one package to make it more efficient and easier. But it still requires staff, it pulls staff away from whatever institution is doing it, and it's something we're all looking at. We'll actually be on a phone call this afternoon with the North Carolina Institute of Medicine that is providing input into the national plan of how to equitably distribute whatever vaccine comes around.
Right.
Even if we get a vaccine, they have to go back to polio vaccine, which was very safe, very effective. It was 14 years before we had no more polio cases in this country. In this environment where they estimate that 35 to 40% of people won't take it, for example, at this point, you know, the vaccine's not going to be the dead stop for this disease. We're gonna be concerned, we're gonna be seeing cases, we're gonna be seeing these outbursts, and hopefully the treatment that we're developing and finding good science for will be the answer to that tale.
Yep, so one other thing that's really important, what Jim said, is they're predicting that a vaccine that comes to us will have to be distributed within 24 hours. So that's all hands on deck for my department, right? So again, we're being pulled from our jobs every day to go distribute a vaccine in real time, right? So you can just think about the logistics of it coming here, and we've been starting to plan already with our regional partners to figure out what that looks like. But a normal flu distribution is quite controlled compared to where this is gonna be. So just a, you know, caveat on it.
And the targets will probably be healthcare workers and first responders first, people in skilled nursing facilities and congregate facilities, people over 65, people under 65 who have diabetes or heart disease, and you've got to give two shots.
Yeah, it's a two regiment, two dose regimen. So one thing we will point out, our plan though, if it works out that it's around January, February, we'd like to couple it with our distribution of the flu vaccine. We encourage everyone to get a flu vaccine. It's a different disease and virus than COVID, but if you get one, you might be more susceptible to get the other. And God knows if you get both at the same time, you're probably gonna be pretty sick, right? So we're encouraging folks to still get your flu vaccine, and we hope that we can couple when we get the COVID vaccine with the distribution of the flu vaccine to make the lift a little bit lighter for the department and the region.
You believe that the vaccine, like, like the regular flu, the virus changes a little bit every year?
Yeah, we know. Yeah, yeah, the guessing game on the flu vaccine, yeah, that's correct.
COVID as well, to be the same kind of thing.
It's the same kind of thing, very well spoken there.
And flu vaccines are out, don't wait.
Yeah, don't wait.
Get your vaccine now. You maybe have a second one, but we don't want to confuse this same symptoms as much as possible.
Yeah, they're two different viruses.
Again, wear your mask, protect me to protect you, wash your hands, try to avoid getting too close to people that you, you know, right at this point with the 600, 200, 300 cases out there, you know, one in 50, the one in 100 people you pass on the street is capable of giving you an infection right now.
Our average positive active caseload, the ones we do the contact tracing with, 250 a day. We have to contact 250 people every single day to do that contact tracing. That's our active caseload until they no longer have symptoms or they're out of isolation, quarantine, or they're recovered from the hospital. So it runs about 250 people a day.
And that's why we're partnering with United Way to help do that contract tracing as well, because we just don't have the staff. And I appreciate the work that Dr. Weiss has done, basically stepping into the middle of a pandemic, and we have gotten a lot more hours out of Dr. Stackhouse recently. And we really do appreciate the work that he's done. One that I did want to mention, just looking at these numbers, if y'all will remember, when we had our first positive test in Wayne County, we would do a press release on every positive case that we had. Don't do press releases anymore. So just the changes that this has happened over the last six to eight months has been just incredible. Is it, you know, one of the reasons, and we appreciate Dr. Jenkins being here, is we don't want this to still become an everyday kind of thing. We still want to keep this in front and the things that we can do to slow down the progression.
Thank you, Craig, and thank you for the shout out about United Way. They have been working in partnership with us to do the hard work, and they're just in a wonderful community organization, so we're really proud and pleased to have them on board. So thanks, Craig, for bringing that up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Chairman.
Thank y'all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Yeah. Man, that was a lot of information. Good information.
You want to take a break?
Y'all want to take a short break here, or you want to keep on going?
I'm good.
Y'all good?
Let's finish your special presentation, then take one.
Next we have is a presentation of the Agriculture Development and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund Grant Program by Soil and Conservation Coordinator Ashley Smith. So we appreciate Ashley being here. As we discussed in the pre-agenda, there's funding out there available, and we wanted to make sure we were, did a good job publicly letting our farmers know that there's an option out there for them if they want to keep their land in farm use. So that's it, I'll turn to Ashley.
Okay, I'll just tell you a little of the basics that I've learned about it since last year, about October. So ADFP was created and passed by a House bill with the General Assembly back around 2005. That's when they made the ADFP. So it's not an actual soil and water program, it's not one of our regular programs, it's something that we can partner with. In order to apply for this program, it has, the easement has to be held by either a nonprofit conservation organization or a county agricultural, so it could be held by extension, it could be held by us. The majority of the ones out there in the state, I talked with some of the people with ADFP yesterday, are held by local soil and water districts. So it's, if someone is interested in ADFP, then they're supposed to contact their local soil and water to help with the beginning application, the paperwork, what tracts of land are you interested in, is there gonna be any homesteads, will there be farmsteads, basically getting all the information together. So we were contacted by Joe Austin last, maybe September, late September, that they had been contacted and someone was interested in it. So they came to one of our board meetings and he talked, Joe talked about it with the board, you know, to get their interest in it. Once that happened, then I worked back and forth with the applicant on what pieces of land, and then the entire application process. Once they apply, they're ranked with anyone else in the state that is interested in this program. ADFP ranks them. We don't have any part of that. Once they have their ranking completed, they have to wait for the General Assembly to say, okay, we're giving you money this year and this is how much. So they know, and what they look at is the land rights development value. So they're not buying the land, they're buying the right to develop it in any way. If you have a big piece of farmland and you say, well, at some point, I know I'm gonna put a shop out here, or I'm gonna have grain bins, you'd have to designate that when you apply. Because otherwise, if you're not in that farmstead area, you'll never develop it. It will always be forestry, horticulture, or row crops, something like that. So once the General Assembly told ADFP how much money they were getting, we were contacted late summer and said, okay, these ranked very well, it's the first in Wayne County, it's one of the first in eastern North Carolina. And the reason there's three is it has to be set up by how, who owns it. So if the entity owns some of the land, the husband owns some, and some's in husband and wife, then that's actually three applications instead of one, because it has to be tied to that forever. There are different options, I don't remember the exact years, there are some that you can do a certain number of years, maybe 20 years or 30 years. That plays a difference in what the development rights were worth. They decided to go perpetual, and they have a basic idea based off of the tax cards, but it will have to be appraised before the, before the loan, the closing of the contract is done, so it could vary a little bit, but appraisal has to be done of that. So as far as advertising it, we haven't advertised at our local level in the past. We don't mind helping anytime we can, we always have to look at our workload, but if someone comes to us and wants to be involved with it, then we'll do everything we can to help them. Not, this is not a fit for everyone. Not everyone is willing to, for 30 years or perpetuity, give up their development rights on their land. They may have one small piece or say, it's not something, I may be interested in having this land ag, but four generations from now, it may be a different story. So it's really up to the landowners and what they think is best, you know, for their family in the years to come. The way it works is we would handle, once the loan closes, we would be looking at, or the contract closes, we would be looking at, once a year, meeting with ADFP to go out and inspect the land to make sure it's being kept per the agreement they have. That's the main thing we'd be doing once we get through this first process. I'm learning more about it every day, just because I've never done it before, you know, but they're good people to work with. I know that at the loan closing is when they would, a certain percentage of it, at that point, they would write a check that would go to the county, and then the county would write the check to the, to the actual applicants. So the money can't be handed, you know, the money doesn't go directly through them, it funnels through us.
Ashley, may I stop you and ask your question?
Sure.
Because I won't be able to hold this all the way to the end of your presentation. Now you say the date, the date, who's the date?
An example, example, well, I mean, when I say they, the ADFP Trust Fund.
Is a federal agency?
No, it's not federal, I guess it would be considered state.
A state, okay, all right, but it's a governmental, and you're, you're willing, you'll be moving towards designating your property to be used for a specific purpose?
That's what the applicant would be looking at. They would be selling their development rights on the land. So if you were interested in it, if you had 100 acres somewhere and you said, I want this to be agricultural land for this many years or forever, then you could go and, you could reach out to ADFP and say, I'm interested in this, this is something I want to do with my 100 acres. And then they would instruct you to reach out to your local soil and water for that county, and then we would help you through the process, because someone has to be the easement holder. So we are the easement holder. We hold the easement of making sure that it's being kept the way it should be.
So it could be row crops, trees, or?
Could be forestry.
Grass, or?
Could be hayland, something, something agribusiness related.
Okay.
But that's the purpose of this whole program, is to preserve agriculture slash farmland?
Yes.
Well, my point is, is that with development and so forth, we're losing farmland every year in Wayne County and across the nation. There's gonna come a time where that the only farmland that you'll be able to have is what this program will pay for. Do you see that coming in the future, folk?
Yes.
Do you see it being a huge, a huge amount of money in the future?
Agribusiness accounts for a sixth of the state's economy, a sixth. And, and over 17% of our gross state products come from agribusiness related, it's agribusiness.
Yeah, but it has a much, much far-reaching effect than that, because we're talking about food on the table as an end result. So that was one of the things that I'm, you know, I think we need to preserve farmland, but I'm not so, so far that this is the way to do it. That's just my thought.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I just, one question for, well, not really a question, but I've only heard you use the word forever two times. Forever is a long time.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm kind of inclined to agree with Commissioner Mayo, I mean, you know.
Well, that's a good.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that this is not a good program, but forever is a long time.
It is.
And sometimes, but is there not a year time limit that can be put on this, or is all contracts forever?
It's up to the applicants, it's up to the landowner. It's up to the landowner what they're interested in. Are they interested in 15 years, 30, or do they want to put this on their land forever?
Okay, so let's just take an example. Let's say you do a 20-year contract under ADFP. They go ahead and get for, let's just say they pull $300,000 out of here, and they keep it for a 20, 20-year contract. At the end of that contract, it goes, all the rights go back to the landowner that can do whatever they want to. I think we're chasing a rabbit here. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but, you know, but you see, you see my point for future years coming? Am I wrong?
No, I need you to explain a little, I don't, I don't understand your hesitation.
What I'm saying is, in order to preserve farmland in the future, years to come, for my children and grandchildren, it's gonna cost the state a tremendous amount of money under this program, because eventually, in order to have any farmland left, all these farmers are gonna get on board with this, wouldn't you?
No, not everyone will. Not, not everyone, I mean, I can speak for people in my family that they farmed in for generations, but I don't know that they want to lock their land into this forever. It's not for every farmer, and there's more farmers that may apply in a state each year that don't all get funded.
Yeah, but you just said you could do it on a, on a contract year. So if you do a 10-year, or 15, or 20-year, it may be a lot more agreeable to other farmers to do that.
Right.
Or landowners.
And the, the amount that they're willing to pay goes significantly down. You don't, the person that wants to sign up for 15, is not gonna get the same percentage of what their land rights is worth as someone that would do perpetual.
Yeah, but the key is, is that there's no strings attached during that contract. So if it's only $50,000, that's $50,000 that the farmer don't have to grow crops to work out. That's my point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
So I attended, I actually went to the Soil and Water Board meeting, and I've spoken with the ADFP reps a couple of times. Those 10 to 15-year easements are hardly ever approved. That is not their preference, and if you apply for a 10 to 15-year, you're probably not gonna get it, because you're not gonna get high enough in the ranking. So really, their preference is these in perpetuity agreements. So sometimes they might do a 25-year, but I was led to believe it was very rare.
Okay, well, let's just look at it a different way then. Let's just say, let's just say that it's forever. Let's don't say you complete it 10 to 15, forever. With this program in place right now, 10 to 15 years from now, we're gonna be paying, we're gonna, the state's gonna be paying through this program, a lot of money to keep farmland from being developed.
Well, I don't think it's an indefinite payment, though. There's a fixed amount that gets approved on the front end. And I don't know what the payment schedule is, we haven't looked at that yet, but.
Yeah, but it's still costing the state and the taxpayer, that's what I'm saying.
But that money would be allocated, I think, within the fiscal year upfront, so it's not gonna be an indefinite allotment, you know, for every year.
And I understand that, but it just, I don't know, it don't hit me right, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, let me just share this point with you a minute, because I, I think maybe you do have a great concern for the taxpayer and spending money, but this money, for them to come over the program, they want this money to be spent doing something. That's just the way I see it. You know, my thing is, is glass half full, half empty. I want the glass to be half full, because I want to keep on getting full. And I have, the, the. And, and I, I have, the, the, the long-term, I don't think bothers me, I, I'm not going, the piece of property that I'm sitting about, is my children or my grandchildren going to do something with it? I'm not going to be here, probably not going to be getting to anything with it, not especially over that 50 years we could be talking about. Is it that they would be wanting to develop a contract that is going to be multi-generational, it's going to be on down, and, and got commitment to that?
Right. And that's why Ashley was saying, it's not for everyone, because your grandkids may want to sell it to a developer, or.
And I don't mind, see, here's the problem with me, is that I don't, someone told me that, Ed, you'll be trying to control stuff from the grave, and I probably will be, but my thing is, is setting a direction for the future generations to follow, that is worthwhile to follow. And, and, and I think maybe people other than me, maybe went to get a little bit of farmland, so that they say, "Land is the greatest thing you'd ever have," and I look at it as multi-generational. And our second thing, Ashley, is this an opportunity for every county in North Carolina?
Absolutely.
And?
Other counties, there's, I mean, there was four done in 2018. That's the most recent they had on their website this morning. So yes, there's, there's a lot of counties that are doing it.
I, I'm probably, won't you make some direct, to direct contact with Duane County, because I, I know you've got to stay inside of Wayne County and do your thing, but I just want to know about every other county, especially Duane.
I don't, I don't know what.
You don't know what they're supposed to?
I don't know about having talked with their soil and water to see what they're.
But as this, I think, over time, I've heard of these programs. Thank you so very much, and go ahead and finish your presentation. I'm sorry, but I knew if I didn't ask your question.
That was, that was the main of what I had, and just answer any questions.
Yeah, I have one, I have one other. Mr. Carter, did you have something?
I did. Just for clarification, this is a state program, and Wayne County nor any of its subsidiaries have anything to do with how the funds were arrived at. Even though those dollars passed through the county, we had nothing to do with it.
Correct.
Now, now, the reason I'm saying that.
Right.
Is that I don't have all of the details, but I really think our lawmakers need to take another look at this, because the preliminary things that I'm looking at is a tract of land in Wayne County that may or may not have development potential, that is.
That's where the appraisal comes in as well, you know, what.
So an appraiser has stated there is development potential.
An appraisal, an appraisal has to be completed before they close, before we close. That's part of the process.
I understand. Is the appraisal on the development value or of the value of the land? Now let me go a little further here.
I don't know which that.
If I had, if I was a farmer and I had 100 acres, and you're going to give me a half a million dollars for me to give you rights for 25 years that I won't develop that land, and I can continue to operate it as I'm currently operating, and I get a half a million dollars, that ain't a bad deal. I think I'll take three of those.
There's, there's a lot of different things that they look at, you know, where the land is, subd, you know, things that I had to do in the application, where it's located, how close are we to military if we are, are we in flight lines of military, what, how many subdivisions are within this radius of it, you know, what type of encroachment could be happening in the area? What are the soils out there? You know, are they, are they good soils, are they developable, developable soils, are they, do they grow good crops? There's a lot of different things that they look at in the process.
I'm just saying that for, for this commissioner, I want as much distance between this as I can get, and I want to make sure that the public understands that this board nor anyone in Wayne County has any control over these grants.
Right, that's why.
It just passes through the county.
Yes, we're just the easement holder. We just hold the easement.
Real quick, Mr. Cott, I'll, I'll be right with you.
You know, I go back, I go back to that word, "forever." We, we, we should keep throwing out the 50-year and all that. A piece of land that's not suitable today, we don't know whether it's going to be suitable or not suitable, or whatever, in 50 or 100 years from now. You know, I, I mean, you, you never know, I mean, with technology and the way things change, you never, you know, you don't know. But, I mean, and we also, we keep bringing up the word "farmer." Farmers own a very small percentage of the land they tend. This, this is a landowner deal. This is, this is a landowner thing.
Yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't be interested in it, because I want my grandchildren to get my grave cleaned off, and, you know, and if I tell them they can't do something, I mean, you know.
It's very much a, a family involved, you know, you're, if you're looking at doing something like this, you have multi-gener, multiple generations of people farming and planning to farm. This isn't someone that has one kid and they want to be an engineer. Someone like that is, is not going to be interested more than likely in doing this. It's someone that they, they've talked with, they've sat down and talked with their family, and they know that it's something that, that, that they want to continue to do. And, and that's why it's not for everyone. That's why you don't see but so many of these, but there are people out there that are interested in it.
Well, with the appraisal done, I'm wondering if it includes soil test for septic, because we have a lot of land here in Wayne County that won't perk. And if it won't perk in some areas, what are you going to develop on it? That's what I say, you know, what the future is going to be. Well, you may not know if they are, if they are doing the appraisal and not doing a perk test for today, because it would be under, it wouldn't be under the guidelines that was intended if it's going to be for curbing development. But if it can't be developed anyway, because it won't pass a perk test, they, they don't qualify, that's what I'm saying. I want to make sure that this stuff is done consistent across the board.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't think that we don't have any, this is a state program, like Ashley, and basically we don't have any input into it.
Yeah, but when it goes.
That's the sad part about it.
But have taken Commissioner Carter's suggestion, though, is that if it comes through as a pass-through through Wayne County, then we are going to get looked at.
How do we get some control over it?
We're going to get some heartburn over it. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr.
I think we need to thank Ashley for her presentation, and let's move on.
I agree, yeah. Thank you, thank Ashley, thank Ashley. Okay.
Well.
I agree with you.
That ended that.
Yeah. It, okay, okay, board. What's the preference of the board?
We're not going to do anything on that matter. Just a presentation.
I said, let Ashley move on.
We're going to move on, okay, Mr. Hanica.
We have the Appointment Committee next, I'll urge you.
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we made some recommendations at our last meeting, we need to vote on today. The Appointment Committee would like to recommend the reappointment of Gail Jones to the Wayne County Council on Aging, and that's in form of a motion from the committee.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any comments? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. We're unanimous.
Okay, the second one is, the Appointment Committee would like to recommend the reappointment of Nancy Delia to the Wayne County Council on Aging, and that's in form of a motion from the committee.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, raise your right hand? Okay, motion is unanimous, thank you.
Third one, that the Appointment Committee would like to recommend is the appointment, or the reappointment of Peggy Tate.
Okay, and we have a motion on the floor, is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please? Okay, we're unanimous.
Well, that's, we don't have.
Chair, it's not on here, that's the, Ms. Tate was for, that also the Wayne County Council on Aging?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
What do we, what do we do?
Mr. Mr. Board, Board Title. Peggy Tate to the, to the blank?
Yes, blank, but it, but it's, but it's to the Wayne County Council on Aging, correct.
Okay, Wayne County Council on Aging, okay. But we're still good on our?
Yes.
On our vote, okay.
Okay, we have one more. All right. The committee would like to recommend the appointment of Dr. Anthony Tony Ham to the Wayne County Corporate, Wayne Health Corporation Board of Directors, and that's in form of a motion. And we made that, we recommended it last meeting.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please? Okay, we are unanimous.
That's all we have to, to appoint today, or Madam Clerk is going to help me on the recommendations for the next meeting.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Cott. The Appointment Committee is recommending the following appointments to be voted on at the October 6 meeting. To begin with, for the Wayne County Latino Council, the appointments of Kim Larson, Anna Snyder, Erin Stryker, Joel Gilli, Adalia Aralano, Ali Batalha, Lee Strickland, and Louis Carisquela. Also, the reappointments of the Wayne County Latino Council for Maria Meriquin and Michelle Then the final one is, the Appointment Committee wants to recommend the reappointments of Fran Casey and Geraldine Sherard to the Wayne County Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee.
Okay.
And that's from the Appointment Committee for recommendations for, to vote on at our next meeting, and that gives y'all two weeks to research this and see if you want to make any changes. And that's all we have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cott. Did I miss something? Are we not going to have public comment today? It's not on our end?
Second meeting.
The second meeting, okay, all right. Thank you. I didn't know if I.
I mean, no, this is the second meeting, the first meeting, I'm so sorry. It's the first meeting, this is.
This is the, yeah, okay, all right. Thank you for that. Okay, Mr. Hanica.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is our consent agenda that we did go over during our pre-agenda workshop today, but we would like to add, at the request of Commissioner Pate, number seven, open broadband letter of credit for $1 million with respect to the NC Great Grant.
Okay, and that would be, that would be upon approval by our?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'll, I'll make sure the letter is, is fully vetted by our attorney, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, any question, preference of the board?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. Is there any questions or comments? All in favor, raise your right hand, please?
I do have a comment.
We are unanimous.
I do have a comment now.
Yes, you do.
This is the first commissioners' meeting I've ever attended, they want to budget a memo.
Well, that's what I was getting ready to say, you know.
Before you prohibited her from submitting it.
Yeah, yeah, she'll have 15, she'll have 15 next month.
Just to make that history.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Cott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under new business, we have a discussion and approval of submission of needs-based Public Schools Capital Fund 2020 grant application for Fremont Elementary. The board is aware, we have been working with the school system, and I appreciate the work that Allison has done, and also the school system finance department, looking at the needs-based lottery grant application. This is a resolution that jointly, well, the Board of Education approved last night, and if the board is okay, I'll be glad to read that for you.
Okay, you want to read it?
No.
No, we're good.
You don't need to read it, I'm, I'm okay.
I've already read it.
Yeah.
Oh, y'all read it? Okay, all right, we're good.
But, but if the board is agreeable with this joint resolution, this will be part of our $23 million application to the NC Lottery Commission for the needs-based grant.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Carter.
Before I make this motion, I'm a little bit surprised in regards to the $23 million request on this school. However, I would not modify the request. I would certainly hope, though, that, once we get down into the short rows, that we definitely shorten that $23 million to a, a more manageable number. And the reason for that, undoubtedly, is because of the final cost of meddling, and I thought we were, in fact, duplicating meddling. But I'll leave it at the 23 on here, and with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the joint resolution between Wayne County Board of Commissioners and the Wayne County Board of Education in support of the NC Lottery Public School Needs-Based Grant Application for Fremont Elementary.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, please? Okay, we are unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next on our agenda is, under new business, is number two, discussion and possible approval of allowing the Wayne County Public School System to utilize small capital funding for maintenance contracts. Again, there is a memo within your agenda packet. We did discuss this during our pre-agenda as well. If there's any questions that the board may have that we didn't discuss.
The preference of the board?
Oh. This is for four projects, correct?
This is for the, the, yes, sir, I think it's the, the four contracts, yes, sir.
Okay, will do. Mr. Chairman, I like, I move to allow the Board of Education to use a small capital fund to pay $1.3 million on his four outstanding maintenance contracts. This is for one year only, I want to make that clear, one year only. The Board of Education shall provide financial statements that it provides to its finance committee and other documents as, as requested.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there any discussion?
Only to commend the commissioner for his wording of his motion.
Institution comes semi-vocative.
Any, any comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand, please? Okay, we are unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a motion to approve amendment to rules of procedure for the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. You do have a copy of the rules and procedures that have been updated and reviewed and recommended by our attorneys.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Page.
He won't be admitting everything on this.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the amendment to rules of procedure for Wayne County Board of Commissioners. Is there any discussion or comments? All in favor, raise your right hand, please? Are we unanimous? Now, this will take effect next meeting, is that correct? Or do you want, next, next commissioner meeting? We need to make sure that on this one and number four, that the public is somehow aware of this, hopefully, the best we can. So we'll address that later. Okay, Mr. Mr. Hanica.
Next, under new business number four, motion to approve amendment to the public comment policy for the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. Again, this was asked to be reviewed by staff and our attorneys. You have that copy in your agenda packets, and it is recommended for approval.
Preference of the board?
Motion to approve.
We got two. If you're going to give it to Mr. Hardison, okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the amendment to the public comment policy for the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. All in favor, raise your right hand, please? Okay, we are unanimous, motion carries. Thank you.
And number five is motion to approve the school resource SRO contract for fiscal years 20, 21, and 21, 22, and I'll turn that over to Andrew.
Good morning. The contract that's in front of you is pretty much, it mirrors the previous contract that the sheriff had with the school system, and that was for 18, 19, and 19, 20. The only caveat to this one, we've been informed by the Board of Education that an MOU is necessary prior to DPI actually releasing their funds and finalizing the funds. In previous years, we actually did an addendum to this, which outlined the total money that we would be receiving from the Board of Education. At this point, I think they're still working with DPI to get that finalized. Um, at this point, I think they're still working with DPI to get that finalized. So we've changed this a little bit, a little bit. What we're going to do is, um, contingent on your approval, enter into the contract today, and then this requires the parties to come back once that funding is finalized, and for us to sit down, and we'll do a supplemental agreement as to the funding. Um, that would be for the first fiscal year of this contract, and then once those numbers are finalized for the second year of this contract, we'll do the same thing. But other than that, it's the same contract that's been in place.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Page.
Can someone tell me, out of the funding on SROs, school resource officers, how much of that comes from local funds?
I believe it's about 500 million, or, excuse me, five, geez.
Hope not.
500,000. 500,000 is county, and then the school system, more or less about 700. That's what it's been in previous, previous year.
And, and the reason for the half a million coming from local dollars is because the state?
Doesn't finance the whole program.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we added additional resource officers, um, to supplement what the state is providing.
I believe that was two years ago we started doing that?
Right. So with that in mind, um, I, I think it's something that we need to reach out to our legislators, because they need to up the ante and provide the funding for those school resource officers. Uh, it's a, again, it's kind of like an unwritten, unfunded mandate that should be borne by, by the state.
The county goes into the hole to fund the program.
Do what now?
We go into the hole to fund the program.
We definitely do.
To provide the service. And I believe that first year, there was some extra cost to the county, because we had to buy the equipment, the patrol, you know, all the equipment for the officers, but we don't have that anymore. Now it's just the recurring salary and maintenance costs.
We're going to add that to the legislative goal.
I saw him writing.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve the school resource officers' contract for fiscal years 20, 21, and 21, 22.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, is there any discussion or comments? All in favor, I raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Hanica.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple things I do want to mention. Uh, I, I do, and I'm glad the sheriff is here, uh, had the nicest text message from the county manager in Johnson County about the response of our swift, uh, swift rescue team, um, uh, for that incident on September 1st, and how appreciative that they were and that the community was. So, uh, he wanted me to make sure I publicly said that, and how much, uh, he appreciated their professionalism, and really just going out as quickly as they did. So did want to mention that publicly. Um, and also, we did talk about, the chamber will hold a legislative update breakfast, uh, which will be held at Lantry on Friday, September 25th at 8:00 a.m. Uh, but one of the things that we are going to be working on is having our own legislative bre- breakfast or meeting, uh, with our delegation, and I've talked to Kayla, uh, between our meetings, and she is trying to set that up now, and we'll try to give you a couple of dates as quickly as possible, so.
And I have no problem if we have it after that breakfast. They're all there.
Right, well, that, that, that's what, well, originally, yeah, correct. But if we can get everybody there at Lantry, uh, we could do that as well, and we can just ask them to stay a little longer.
Okay.
Great. Is that, would that be the will, that we'll just do it there after?
I think it'd be a lot, a lot more.
I don't think it's on our calendar yet, is it?
Uh, she added it today. She was adding it this morning.
So that, uh, what was the date of that?
Uh, the 25th.
The 25th?
At 8:00 a.m.
Okay.
25th, on Friday.
Do we need to let her know whether we're going or not?
Uh, if you'll let her know, then we'll make sure the chamber is aware as well.
Okay, okay.
Well, if we're going to have our meeting with our legislators, uh, we probably all need to be there.
I agree.
Okay. Um, we will probably need to advertise that as a meeting as well, uh, since we will have all, uh, members there, and we'll be discussing county business. Yeah, so, we'll do that as a special call. And that is all I have at this time. Thank you.
Okay, um, so where, you haven't done your accounting matters report, have you?
Oh, she just did. I think he just did.
Are you done with your accounting matters?
Yes, sir, I'm done, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Okay, alright. So we're, we're at Board of Commissioners, uh, committee reports. Um, I, I keep forgetting where I'm starting at, so I just flip a coin, you know? But Commissioner Pate?
There's nothing to report, but I was, this morning, when we were talking, we were kind of laughing up phase 2.5, and it made me think of something I, that I read this morning in the Pennsylvania. Some county commissioners got together, along with some other counties, and involved officers about reopening business. And the federal judge ruled, you probably know that, that it was unconstitutional what the governor of Pennsylvania had done. I'm not suggesting we do that, I'm just bringing that up.
Well, you know, that's basically what I was suggesting.
Was that in the form of a motion?
I just want those of you to be aware that this is going on throughout our country. And I certainly understand, small businesses in particular, who are really separate, would be interested.
Yep.
Now, even Judge Napolatona, whatever his name is, he, he talked about it this morning on Fox, about filing a judge.
Yeah.
Got enough to stand up and say, no, that's wrong. More coming. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, Mr. Doherty? You want to be last for some reason?
No, no, I, uh, I, I couldn't agree more, uh, with Commissioner Pate's comment, and that is, I, I think we're beginning to come back around to some of my concerns that I've expressed all along, and that is, we live in America. This is the land of freedom, of freedom of choice, and I, I think we've gone overboard in regards to some of the powers that we've allowed one or a few of, uh, elected representatives to have. Um, we didn't elect a king. We, we don't serve at the pleasure or live at the pleasure of an individual. Um, and even though we are facing some very trying times, uh, we, we heard today, uh, children may carry coronavirus, but they really are not being infected by coronavirus. I want y'all to recognize that in Wayne County, there are private schools that are operating with children going to school every day, and the world has not come to an end. So hopefully, we will see some reason, and hopefully, our third branch of our government will finally step up and do what they should have done all along, and they say, this is unconstitutional. You can't do the things that you're doing. You can't order people to do certain things. You cannot shut down businesses. You cannot take away the rights that are protected by the Constitution. And the sooner that happens, the better for our country. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Kamartie. Oh, by the way, thank you, you slipped in on me this morning, I didn't see you, so thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think probably the only comment that I have is that, uh, there's a seatbelt law, uh, that's designed to, uh, minimize injury and/or save lives. And so, sometimes the government steps in to try to minimize loss and deaths, and, uh, while I'm very cognizant of the fact that small businesses need to survive, I want the government to help them survive, but I, I don't want to see, uh, I don't want to see the virus spike, because we're, we've got a rush to do stuff that we feel like we just have an absolute right to do. And, uh, while the governor is, uh, conservative in his interpretation of how we need to go about, I, I, I think he probably is just trying to save lives, so, uh, those who want to rush out, though, and play Russian roulette and push things a little bit further along, I want them to go ahead and, and do that, because that's that absolute right that everybody feels like they need to have. I, I just want to try to avoid coming in contact with them or them visiting me. Uh, that's it.
Okay. Mr. World?
No, I don't have anything.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Mr. Aikott?
Uh, just shortly, uh, I just, I was in town yesterday, and I kept seeing people walking, and then I saw EMS trucks stationed, and I saw the, our medics that used the bicycle or something come by, and I couldn't figure out what in the world was going on, so I stopped and asked. And there were, uh, I don't know how many there was, a, a lot of them, young men and women and, and, and middle-aged people also, walking for POWs. And, uh, yeah, I don't really know anything at all about the event that they were, what they were doing, but, uh, I did stop and thank some of them, and like I say, I really didn't know what I was thanking them for, other than they were walking for POWs, and I don't know, I don't what insticated, you know, why or what the reason it was, other than, but it was, it was a good cause and peaceful, uh, and I just, you know, I just wanted the public to know that we appreciate people, you know, remembering people like our POWs. Uh, that's basically all I have. I'll make more comments in 49 days.
49 days.
Yeah, it, uh, yeah, having holiday, a lot of our meetings are, are slimmed, the only thing I can tell you is, is that I've been, I've been in more doctor's offices for the last two weeks than I want to be in. I got COVID tested twice in one day. So I'm, I'm telling you, I know where I'm at so far with COVID, yeah.
So, so two of them negatives is you?
They are. I got tested twice in one day.
Did they count them both into the overall numbers?
I don't know. I was, I was tested both times here in Wayne County.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm helping the cause, is what I'm saying.
Go back and test again.
Okay. I, um, we did have a, a WCA executive board meeting, and, uh, as you know, we're still working on the MOU, that Craig and I are involved in this with the global transport, and we're making, we're making progress, but boy, it is really slow and tough. It's going to take a while, but I think overall that we can eventually come to an agreement, which I agree with being regional. We've got to be regional, uh, with, with our industries and, and the way we advertise, but it's got to be done right, and you, you can't have it one-sided. Everybody's got, any county that's involved, it's going to have to be treated the same. It's got to be consistent. That's what we're shooting for. So, uh, I was, want to piggyback just a little bit on Commissioner Doherty. I, I'm not putting words in, in people's mouths, but my take was, is that Dr. Stackhouse and Dr. Weiss, from some of their comments about children in schools and so forth, and I'm saying that the numbers, the numbers are in favor of, of going to the classroom. The numbers are in favor of going to the classroom. And I know Dr. Harold's here, it's good to have you here with us today, but I've asked this question several times, and I know public schools completely different, but if a private school can put this on and have classroom instructions, there's got to be something that we can learn as, as in the public to try to get a mix and match here that, that, that does everyone. The other thing that I said is that, um, you have a, a church, for example, like our church, that has, uh, that has a, a nursery or school, a daycare. These kids that are, go into this daycare, and they're in a, they're in a room, they're playing, they're doing, if they can do it in a daycare, why can't we look at the possibility of doing something similar to that in our public school? I, I may be putting you on the spot, but these are questions I've been asked every day, Dr. Harold. So, I don't know, I'm just a common sense guy. Uh, you guys know what, what, what you want to do and how you're doing it, but I'm seeing the numbers now to the fact that we need to get our children back some, other than virtual, because everything is up, you know? Suicide, everything is up, you know, child abuse, everything is up in our county, and a lot of that has to do, because our children are being put in a cage like a puppy. They, they're not able to interact with each other, and we know what all those consequences are. So it's a, it's a hard, hard decision. I'm just glad I'm not on the Wayne County Public School. I appreciate what you do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I would like to interject one little small piece in that.
Yeah.
And then I, uh, I, I know that we love to compare public schools with private schools, but one of the, one of the parts of that presentation, uh, that the, that the two doctors made was that, that they are, that a lot of the spikes of, of the high prevalence of COVID-19 was in, uh, families where there are multi-generational families living in the same house. And simply based upon, uh, without me looking at the sheet, the number of families whose children are going to private schools are not likely to have a large number of those in multi-generational households.
Right.
Now, my, my thinking without having the facts in front of me says that the more likelihood that you're going to find multi-generational households in the public schools is going to up in the opportunity for those children who are curious to carry back their grandma and grandpa, rather than, uh, the average family who will be going to one of our quote-unquote private schools. So it's kind of hard to compare apples to apples, and, uh, uh, I do agree that, uh, that, no, one of my concerns is that there are children out here who does not have the support at home to be able to deal with some of the subject matter. But that's where great minds are going to have to step up and be able to help families be able to handle this information more. But to trade off sending everyone back to school en masse, with our death rate beginning to potentially spike because of too much quick interaction without a lot of thought, uh, I want us to be forever cautious, that's, and, and, uh, and not to make comparisons that are not, uh, apples and apples.
Thank you.
Well, if you remember, my comments, uh, Mr. Kamartie, is that I said, I didn't say that we need to do what private schools, I said there should, there should be something that we can learn from, by public schools, from looking at private schools. I know we're not comparing apples to apples, but the principles are the same. The principles are the same when it comes to kids, whether there's 15 kids in one house or one. These kids need interaction with each other. The problem is, the problem is worse than the virus in some cases, and we were, we're rapidly reaching that point. If you don't believe it, you talk to DSS. If you're on DSS board, you talk to the sheriff. He knows the calls that he's been getting is rampant in Wayne County. So you have to sort of balance these things, that no, I agree with you, Mr. Kamartie, we don't need the one, one thing, one shoe fits all, we don't need to do that. We need to try to learn from those that are successful, no matter what their income bracket is, no matter who they are. We should be able to pull something out to help us. So, having said that, um, I have, that's all I have for today, Mr. Hanica.
And Commissioner Aikott, uh, made, made me think about it, I mentioned it to Carol. Uh, normally, the Board of Commissioners has canceled the November Normally, the Board of Commissioners has canceled the November board meeting, the first meeting, which will be the election day, and we did know if you wanted to still continue that and go ahead and get that out there, that we will cancel the November 3rd meeting, regular meeting.
What's the purpose of the board on that?
Can we have some later discussion on that before we actually act? We don't need to cancel it.
We can, but I just wanted to throw it out there to remind you that we do have a, the general election is November 3rd, and we have a board meeting November 3rd.
Well, I can go ahead and tell you, if you have the meeting, it won't be by 6:00 out of here. No, my only purpose for postponing any decision on that is that we're probably not gonna meet on that day, but we might want to meet the following week or another day during that week or something. In other words, postpone it. Depends upon what's on our plate, just what I'm trying to say. I'd hate to limit us only to, to one meeting in November, which would be just before Thanksgiving.
What you can do, sir, if you know for a fact that you don't want to meet on election day, to allow everyone to go to the polls or do what they need to do, you can go ahead and cancel that now, then you can call a special meeting at any time, provided that, you know, we have enough days ahead of time. You still have the meeting on the 17th.
You haven't got to make the decision today. You'll know, and instead of having a special meeting, you probably want to, not necessarily recess it, but to have, just to change your regular meeting from that day to another one, so.
So maybe the second meeting in October, we can make some determination.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
I just wanted to throw that out.
But don't schedule anything for November 3rd, Commissioner meeting. If anybody calls and wants to get on the agenda, sorry, we don't know yet. We might meet in Carteret County.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I might note here, I just got a notation from the News and Observer. The North Carolina Appeals Court has reversed a judge's ruling and will allow voter ID.
Wow, no kidding.
That is, that is a major thing there, that, that was the North Carolina Appeals Court. Reverses the judge's ruling will allow voter ID.
I want to have a long standing.
Well, it was a constitutional amendment that was voted on. I can't believe that they're turning around and trying to undo what was voted on as a constitutional amendment.
You, you're 100% right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I did, I did miss one thing. I gotta get my plug in for the, for the college, hey, they, for 28 years, the foundation at the college has been doing a fundraiser just to raise money for the Foundation for Scholarships. And, you know, with what's going on, they're being very limited on what they can do. They are planning on still having their golf tournament at Walnut Creek, but the other functions that usually go along with it are probably gonna have to be canceled, but they are gonna, they do have planned a 50-50 drawing, and that and the golf tournament is gonna be basically the biggest fundraisers for the Foundation for Scholarships this year, and I do have some tickets available if anyone was interested in purchasing a 50-50 ticket, and I think the least that will be given is $3,000 to the winner. So I have, I have tickets. Apparently Adrian's already sold all his.
I sold mine. Wow. Any other, any other comments? We need to get back in the closed session. Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir, to discuss the expansion of businesses in Wayne County and to consult with your lawyers to preserve our attorney-client privilege.
Okay, a motion to go into closed session?
Certainly.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are in closed session. You want to, you want to take a... Okay, we're, welcome back to open session. We just finished our closed session. Mr. Hanica?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's one thing that we forgot to add to the agenda today, and if you're okay, we would like to bring this up now. We need an updated approval on our CARES funding that is due actually today, and this is something staff's been working on, so if Allison, you know, if you wouldn't mind presenting that to the board for possible approval.
So what I'm presenting to you today is, we've submitted to you previously a plan for our CARES funding that we received from, ultimately, the federal government passed through the state, but after that plan was submitted, we, the rules changed, and we were told that we had to allocate a minimum of 25% to municipalities that submitted an amended plan, submitted a plan to us by September 1st. So since that deadline has passed, we had three municipalities respond and send their plans in. So in that time, we've also been looking at the amended rules of what's eligible into CARES funding and what's not. So what we are submitting to you today is an amended plan that I would give to the state asking to use the CARES funding for the following items, and I apologize that you all did not receive this earlier. It hit me that this was due today, so I've got to submit this in. So we have our municipality allocations. City of Goldsboro, $966,689. Town of Pikeville, $8,500. Town of Fremont, $20,513. Nonprofit funding, $200,000. And then we would have, let me see here, we would have public health expenses of $200,000. Payroll expenses of $3,147,400. Expenses of actions to facilitate compliance with COVID-19, $100,000. This totals our funding allocation that was made in two distributions of $4,643,102. And what I'm asking today is if you would consider approving this plan as well as the associated interlocal agreements that would have to be signed between us and the municipalities that submitted their plan, and then the appropriate budget amendments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept the amended plan and the appropriate budget amendments, along with each interlocal agreement that may be necessary.
Thank you.
Okay, we, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion by anyone, any commissioner? No discussion? All in favor of the CARES funding summary as presented? Raise your right hand, please. We're unanimous, okay.
All right, thank you very much. I'll make my deadlines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is, is that, is everything, are we done? Okay, thank y'all for coming. By the way, I start, I start, I just, I was on the phone with my oncologist, I start my treatment, it's a week from today. Thank you.